I will call the meeting to order and we will start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Grokow, Mayor Kransky, I am present. Grokow.
Present.
Kufal, absent tonight. Padilla.
Present.
Rose.
Present.
And Iker.
Here.
Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
No.
Okay, then I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion from Iker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Padilla. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Comments, updates, concerns? It doesn't look like we have any citizens here tonight. Any council member updates? Any updates from city staff?
The building that was demoed today, that really went well. We had a little damage. We had a street light fixture that was taken out. And then also the planter box, the top stone that was damaged from some of the debris that fell down from the building. So it was a very tricky demolition project, but everything else went really well. So nothing else was damaged, so we were pretty pleased about it. So at this point, they're, they've basically cleaned up around the site. Everything's been pushed into the hole or the basement of the building. And the next couple of days, they're going to be hauling out debris. And their plan and hope is to backfill it by, on Friday.
Moving on to the consent agenda, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion from Iker. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Grokow. Any questions or discussion about the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public hearings, we have nothing on the schedule tonight. Communication requests and petitions. We have information about the pumpkin decorating contest at the library. Public safety open house coming up next week. Name that town at the Gaylord Library. Bridge views recruiting EMTs. Trick or treat at the library and the senior center newsletter. Under department and committee reports and action items, the first on our agenda is Public Works. And we have Ty here with us tonight.
Good evening, everybody. The first thing I have is next to you there, there's some sample letters that will be sent out. I just want to go through them really quick here. The top half is pretty much all the same, kind of explaining. Towards the bottom there, you'll notice the first one is a non-compliance letter, which means they have to have work done. And it kind of explains what they'll be getting with this letter, which is the actual city ordinance, which is at the bottom of your packet. And a record of the inspection, which is the paper record. And a camera snapshot of the, of the actual non-compliance. I also, we also put in there, if they want to see a full video, we have the video available. So if anybody wants to see their video of their line, they can. In case somebody wants to completely redo their line for some reason, so. The second page is a compliance letter. So basically this says that, hey, we inspected your sewer line and it is in compliance with city code. So everybody that's in compliance will be getting one of those. And the third one, third letter is an unable to inspect letter for whatever reason, muck or shoulders or something, you can't get the camera up there. So those will be sent to the people that we couldn't televise. If any of you got any, have any questions, feel free to call me, email me about any questions about any of this stuff. So, and also we'll be looking at roof leaders also around town. Anyone, any roof leaders that go into the ground will be putting, knocking on doors and putting dye down the roof leaders to make sure they don't go to the sanitary sewer. Because that can be a big problem also. And that's a pretty easy inspection. We can do those ourselves. Does anybody have any questions on any of this?
I don't. I like that we're doing a letter or two to those that have their systems in compliance, just so they know.
That way they know.
And don't have to worry about it. So I like that that's being done.
We just updated this earlier this year, didn't we though? So we should use the new version? Because this one's from 2013. I thought we just updated this.
We updated it last year.
I just saw it was dated 2013.
Yeah, I think that was when they did the sump pump.
Yeah, okay.
Enforcement. So it's basically the same, it's just a little change.
Yeah, it looks, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
I just noticed it though.
Anything else about I and I? Otherwise we can move on to the bulk water station discussion.
Second thing I have is a discussion about bulk water. Last year, when the old water plant was torn down, that's where our bulk water service was. It was a coin operated little machine from the 60s. That's how it worked. It was on a timer. We had discussed for some time of building a new bulk water dispenser by the West Water Tower. As of right now, I mean, the question got asked, why were you even doing it? Because we don't hardly get anybody that gets bulk water, except for large services. And usually they take right off the hydrant, is what they do. And so we did a little cost comparison here. Most times, somebody that comes to get water, like a jetter, you know, a hydro vac, usually it's a thousand gallons they get at a time. And it's about three bucks. We, we charge them three bucks. And we don't get that very often. We do have a couple of parts on hand. But just some additional costs that we'd have to include would do, we'd have to tap the main line out at the West Water Tower with a two-inch water main, with a shut-off valve and a blowout for the winter. That is like $6,600 as a quote from Jerpy that I got earlier this year. We need a new water meter. For two-inch water meter, that's $1,400. A backflow preventer, that's $1,700. And that's not including the cost to pour a concrete slab for the shed, build the shed and run power to the shed to operate everything. So I think by the time you get done, you're going to have at least $10,000 into it. And are you ever going to make that money back? I mean, it's, it's kind of a no-brainer. It'd take you decades to make that money back. The bulk water thing was, it was big in the past because we had a local landscaper, lawn care company that would get it quite often. Since that, he retired, we haven't hardly have any. We, I think we take more out of that bulk, that, the old plant than anybody else does, just for water and trees and things like that. So we don't, and the big guys, they don't want to put in their 25 cents and get 100 gallons each time. It takes them forever, so. Yeah, after putting this up, it would take a long, long, long time to make our money back. So, just asking the council for guidance on this.
Do any of our surrounding communities have bulk water, so if someone needed it?
I don't think Winthrop does because they've been, there's been a couple asphalting or seal coating companies that have come over here to get
Okay.
bulk water from us, you know, before and take right out of the hydrant, so.
Not that it matters, I was just curious.
I'm sure, pretty sure probably the bigger communities have them. Because the control box that we bought, we actually bought, it was from a, it was from a water plant in Ohio, that they were actually upgrading their bulk water. But theirs was right at the water plant, so.
So is there anything we can do with those parts that we have already?
Sell them.
Trying some off?
Yeah. Advertise them. Maybe not put them on auction, but advertise them somewhere until, just until they sell. Because auctions, you, it's kind of like, it's kind of like that lift station pump. It's no, if there's, somebody's not looking for it at that particular two weeks, you're, they're never going to see it. You know, so.
Okay. So tonight, we're looking for a motion to deny erecting a new bulk water station at the West Water Tower.
So moved.
Motion from Iker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rose. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have unless anybody's got any questions for me. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ty. Next on our agenda is new business, our health insurance renewal. And we have Todd Zimmerman with us tonight. So welcome, Todd.
Good evening, everyone. I think everybody knows this already, but it's, it's been a tough year for insurance renewals. I mean, a lot of, a lot of the companies are just canceling their products and leaving the state. Other, other ones are just increasing their rates significantly. So, as you can see by the handout, the minutes that Steve put together there, the city of Gaylord for 2026 got an 18.37% rate increase, which is, is very high. And just to kind of let you know, the city right now is insured under the Minnesota Co-op. And what the Co-op is, is it's a, it's a pool of municipalities all put together and they put together a self-insured plan. Because they're strengthened numbers, so they tried to get better rates by doing, going with the Co-op, okay? So it's self-insured. So with that in mind, how they, how they rate your, your group here, how they come up with your renewal is, it's a 50-50 deal. And what I mean by that is 50% of your rate increase is based on all the groups in the pool, based on the premium that they pay and based on their claims. So that's half of what your renewal comes in at, okay? The other 50%, being it's a self-insured plan, you share in the, in the claim process and you, you share in the, in the, over, overcharge you can for the premiums also. So 50% of that is your own experience and 50% of it is an overall group experience, is what it is. And just to kind of let you know, the median renewal for the group was 12.2%. Okay, so that's what everybody would get. And then, or excuse me, that's the median, 85% of the, the groups in the pool got that rate, 12.2% rate increase. And then over and above that, if you have high claims, that gets added to that. And so last year, the city of Gaylord had claims that were over and above their premiums that they paid in, so they got a higher rate increase than the 12.2%. Okay? Now, that could work in reverse too. If you're, if the premium that you paid in was higher than the claims that they paid out, you could have got less than the 12.2. And I think it came down to, the lowest was 6% rate increase this year on groups that were really good. Okay? So that's, that's how that works. And self-insure just means that you're going to share in the claims or lack of claims on the, on your group. Now, that's being in the pool, which is, like I said, is considered a self-insured group. And, and just to let you know, I do everything that I can to try to get your rates in line and to try to see how we can come about some savings and premiums for the city. And so what I do with every group is I shop it. And I've got a program that has all the carriers in this area, in this program, and it has all their rates coded into it. And these would be fully insured groups. So the, the Co-op, they have their company that underwrites their plan right now as Medica, okay? Now, you can buy a Medica plan as a fully insured group too, if you wanted to come out of the Co-op, okay? So in this fully insured program that I have, it has all, like I said, it has all the carriers in there. And so I put in your census of the group, all the employees and dependents that are on the group. I put it into this program and it gives me the, what the rates would be on a fully insured group. And just to kind of let you know, the rates for 2026, January 1st, 2026, they're not coded into the program yet. So what I did is I ran them for 12, one of 25, to see if your renewal was in December, what those rates would be. And those rates were actually higher than what your 18.37% rates came in with the, with the Co-op. So I can assure you, when the January rates come, come out, they're going to be even higher than the December rates of 2025. So, long story short, you're still getting the best deal with the Co-op, even with the big rate increase that you have, okay? So, in the past, we talked about maybe looking at some different plan options to try to save some premium dollars. And we met, or I met with the insurance committee here and, and we went over some of the different plans. I think on the $1,000 deductible, the goal plan, we looked at maybe going to a $2,000 or a $3,000 deductible. And in the, in your minutes that you got there, Steve put together what the differences would be in the, in the premiums. And I think the insurance committee kind of came up with the idea that, you know, that the savings aren't that significant in order to make a change this year, but to keep an eye on it for future years, to see if that's going to pay off for you. So, you know, I think what, what you need to do is just decide, hey, let's just stay with the plans we have and move forward to next year. Or do we want to make the change and go to a, maybe a $2,000 or a $3,000 deductible plan? And I think, I think we came, when we were talking, we thought that there wasn't going to be a significant enough savings to go from a $7,000 high deductible HSA plan to say an $8,500 HSA plan. There's not enough savings there in premiums to, to make that move. So. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Let me tell you, this, the way these renewals are coming in, it doesn't make my job any easier either, I'll tell you. This is trying to come up with some ideas for people, it's just, I mean, they're basically earning. You either got to do, do things. You either got to go to a different deductible plan or a different plan to save on premium dollars. You can do more cost sharing with the employees if you, if you'd like. That would save the city some, some premium dollars also. But, I mean, those are basically the options. I mean, it used to be, years ago, you could get quotes from other companies and the other companies would come in, some would come in lower, you know? But that just isn't the case nowadays. I mean, it seems like all the companies compare notes, you know? Or they purposely don't have the exact same plan that you have currently. They have different plans, so you can't really compare apples to apples there. So you have to, you know, if you want to save some premium dollars, you have to go to a lower benefit type plan. And, I mean, with that being said, you know, on your renewal that you see there, there is another network. Everybody's in the passport network, which is the most extensive network in the state for, for Medica. Now, there's another network that you could go in, but that network does not include Mayo Clinic in it. So you could, you could save some premium dollars by going to that network. I think it's 3% or something like that in premium savings. But trust me, it, it's not going to be worth the savings. When somebody gets sick, a lot of times they like to go to Mayo. And, you know, if Mayo's not in the network and the employee's got to pay more, the out-of-network deductibles or the out-of-network out-of-pocket maximums, it's just, it's not good on that end. So.
Well, thanks for putting everything together for us and having our city's best interest in mind, saving us money as much as you can.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I, 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 I try to come up with ideas and, like I say, there's really not a lot of changes, other than going to different plans or cutting the benefits. That's, that's kind of the options that we have right now. So. Anyway, the one thing I think you just need to be aware of is that the Co-op, if you want to change plans, so if you want to go from $1,000 to $2,000 or $3,000 deductible, they would prefer to have that in writing by October 27th, okay? If you're not going to change any plans, you don't need to do anything. I just need Steve to initial by the two plans that you want and sign it. And we send it into the Co-op and that, that takes care of the renewal.
Does anyone else have any questions, comments? Like Tony said, we, we appreciate you, you looking for us every year and trying to find us the best rates possible, so.
Yeah, well.
For what you do.
One of these years, I'm going to come in here and say your rates went down 5%. Then, you know, I might even bring some champagne along.
That would be great.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Todd. So tonight, do you just need consensus or a motion to stick with our current plan or propose something differently?
So this is our annual review, as you know. And basically these, if you're not making any changes, you can certainly just do a consensus, not change anything. But if you do make any changes, I would suggest a motion for that.
What are the council's thoughts?
As far as HSA goes, that $200 going in, is that, I know that was based off about the difference.
Pardon me?
So on the, for the HSA plan, how the city puts in the $200 difference, basically, per month, per employee? I know when that first got figured out, that was based on the difference of what the city pays and, is that still there? Is that?
Oh, I see. What, you mean what the city's kicking in for the employees' HSA contributions?
The $200, which going back three, four years, that was basically just the difference.
Yep.
Is that still the case?
And that was up for review every year. So you can review that and say, hey, is this still what we want to contribute? Or no, we want to make changes to that. And just to kind of let you know, it, that's a, an internal decision. You know, I have nothing to say about that, so you can decide as a council, you know, what, what you want to do for the HSA plans.
Steve, on your notes, when you have the city costs for the HSA plan, does that include the $200 that the city's contributing?
No, I don't think so. That's just the premiums.
It's just premiums, right. So going back to when the council initially established that, and maybe this is what you're asking, is the difference between the two plans, it was a savings. By offering the HSA plan was a savings because the cost of the plan was less than the, the co-pay plan. And then the reason for the 200 or that, where it came from, that, at that particular time, the savings was about $200. It's actually gotten, grown a little bit more, as far as the difference between an HSA and a co-pay plan.
Just to add to that, Steve, I think one of, another one of the reasons why we did that is because if we didn't have an incentive where the city kicks in some money into those HSA plans, no one would do it. They'd all just say, oh, I'm just going to stay on the $1,000 deductible plan. You know, even though it costs the city the same amount of money, they're saving on the premiums here, but they're giving that to their employees. What you're doing is you're adding another benefit to the city employees and it doesn't cost anything. See what I'm saying? The, the savings that you're getting in premiums, you're just giving it to the employees, put in their HSA, so it's another option for the employees. So it's really another benefit for the employees, especially the employees that don't utilize their health insurance. I mean, you know, if they can just take the savings, rather than giving it to the insurance company, put it in their pocket, I mean, a lot of people would take advantage of that. So.
I understand that, but still there's an 18% increase that the city has to pay.
Yeah, that's why we put on there.
If they're saving us a, a little bit of money, that's great. Because the insurance still went up by 18%.
That's exactly right. However, the 18% that it went up, it went up to, with a lesser amount of premiums because the HSA costs less money. So it's 18% of the HSA premium as opposed to the $1,000 of the premiums.
It's still a significant amount of money.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. Regardless of how you spend it, it's, it's a lot of money.
I just want to make sure we're keeping the incentive. Like I said, I think the city should be meeting in the middle of that. Because that's, I was designing like three, four years ago and I just want to make sure we're keeping up with that.
Yeah. And to be honest with you, I never even calculated the difference. You know, how much savings they're having by going to the HSA plan compared to the other one.
Is that that 4170 number, 4,170?
But again, that's not including the, the $200.
Yep.
2,400 a year.
I mean, it's, yeah, if you take a look at that one sheet where it's got the, the premiums, the, the monthly premium for the $1,000 deductible and then the monthly premium for the $7,000, you can just deduct it. Deduct one from the other and figure out how much the savings is. See what I'm saying? Okay, like here, here's the current rate, here's the new rate. So take 96104 minus 69148. And that's the difference, the savings that they're getting in premiums. Yep. No, that's on the individual side.
$300.
You see that? If you look at that rate sheet from the Co-op, the current rate for the, you know.
So even with a $200 contribution, we're still saving $100?
Mm-hmm.
For the ones that participate in the HSA.
Yep.
Yeah, so I mean, there's some savings there for the city. Yeah, so the... Yeah, it's... One of these days, I'm going to get some glasses that I can read with. Yeah, so the, the $1,000 deductible is 96104 is the new rates for 1126. That's a single rate. And the one for the $7,000 is 691. So it's about, what, $270 savings?
On top of the 200.
Not on top of 200.
So there's 70.
It's 70 savings to the city by people that, by employees that are going to the $7,000 deductible plan.
Anything else? Council want to proceed by consensus staying with our current plan? Or does anyone want to make a motion for something different?
I think the $200 should be bumped to like in the middle again, to 250. I don't know if that has to be decided as part of this or if that's something we can do later? Or what your guys' thoughts are?
Well, we, we've got until January 1st. Actually, we haven't, that's, that's on our side. But from the budget standpoint, I'd prefer to know that sooner than later, if you're going to make any changes in that, because I'd have to adjust accordingly.
That's my thought.
Yeah, yeah, the Co-op doesn't, they don't need to get involved in what your, your contributions to the HSA are.
You're going to try like consensus first or?
Yes, let's try that.
Okay.
So, those that are in consensus of sticking with our current plan indicate that. Okay. So we have consensus for that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, that form there, then Steve, you can just sign that and check, initial up by the plans and then you can just email it to me, all right?
Okay.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Um, next, under new business 11B, the old elementary school outstanding utility bill.
I brought this up at the last council meeting, that we have an outstanding bill. Actually, I brought it up, it's just an informational item at the beginning of the meeting. And you asked that I bring it back as a regular item on the agenda then. So this, this amount accumulated when the county took over the, over the property. So it was after the tax forfeiture came into play. And so we, anything before that was certified to the county and was taken care of with, with the former owner of the property before the school, or before the county. So we have an outstanding balance of $1,152.40. And a lot of that, in some respects, is due to the storm sewer fees. Based on how we calculate our storm sewer fees, it's based on the size of the property or the impervious surface on the property. And they have a fairly large property there with the building. And so a lot of that is started with that. So the question, I guess, now that the property's been sold, we have a new owner of the property and a person is working towards a development, hopefully. The question is, what do we want to do with this outstanding balance? Normally, our procedure would be that we would certify this amount. If it hasn't been paid by a certain date, which it hasn't, we would certify that onto the, onto the property taxes to be collected that way. We haven't brought that forward yet at this point in time, mainly because, again, we have a new owner of the property. And the question is, do we want to certify that for this new property owner to be responsible for paying? Or, and the alternative, the council could potentially waive that in light of the circumstances. And then the next question, if, if you decide to do that, what do we do in the future from a billing standpoint? Do we, do we build a property? Do we not build a property? So I'd need a little bit of direction on all those things, as far as what you'd like to do. So I've asked Mark actually to take a look at this as well and, I don't know if you have some comments or any input to share at this time?
Sure. So Steve asked me just to look into what's type of discretion the council has in this case to waive or push back these charges. And I don't need to necessarily go into all the specifics. But, you know, in this case, it does look like the, the council does have authority to waive these or otherwise charge them. So I, I think some relevant items could be, you know, what impact these... So, um, I, I think some relevant items could be, um, you know, what impact these charges would have on, you know, the viability of the future development, um, you know, the, you know, how the building is situated as, you know, it's vacant, it's empty, it's not necessarily using these charges, so, um, or these services at this point. So, um, if, if this is something that the council wants to move forward, I, I don't have a, see a reason why you can't. Conversely, um, you know, if you don't see a compelling reason to, to grant this latitude to the, the new owner, um, then council would be well within its rights to, to leave these and assess them against the property.
Steve, I just have a question regarding, you're saying the direction moving forward. Now that he's there, he's, or he's purchased the building, is this a done deal? Are you asking that if we waive it tonight, are we going to continue to waive his fees until he...
Yes. I guess I'd like direction on both of them, because if we waive this, you know, um, I, I could understand, you know, these are past. This was before he owned the property, so that makes, that's a little bit different. But going forward, normally, we would bill, you know, just like any other property, even if it's vacated. Uh, we still have billing our base fees that we would charge. There's no user fees because there's no water being used, but we have base fees. And that's what these old fees are as well.
The county won't pay him?
At this point, I doubt it. They don't own the property, their responsibility to the property is, is passed.
I, I think going forward, we should probably be billing. I mean, just to answer the easy question, yeah. If that's your guys' same thought, at least get the easy part over the way.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would be in favor of just, um, letting go of the past, a thousand, whatever. But maybe going forward, yes, to, just to start with. Would be my thoughts.
I, I, I agree. I mean, he wasn't there, it's not his fault that those fees occurred, but now he's the owner, so...
I guess, part of my only thought, and this is just additional things to think about, is, um, and I, I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other, but just something to think about, too. He, he is trying to do something with a very major project, major building over there. And right now, it's, kind of stands out in our community as something that needs to, some work or go away. And so he's taken on a pretty big investment, a pretty big project here to try to do something for the community, for himself, too. But, um, going forward, you know, he's, he's going to be probably investing, if he's going to redevelop, but he's going to be investing some serious money into that property. And in, maybe in the spirit of trying to work with him and assist him along that venture, this would be a way for us to maybe do that, maybe for a period of time or something like that.
What kind of, like, what is that fee usually like? What kind of fee are we talking about? When if we go ahead and start billing him that, what is it? Can you guess, or I don't know how it's calculated?
I, I want to say it's probably going, his billing will be somewhere between one hundred and two hundred dollars a month. Does that sound about right, Lori?
Wouldn't that be something that we could readdress at a later time? If, if, say, for example, it goes like a year before he starts building, but then stuff starts happening, couldn't we say, okay, we're going to waive these fees for that year? But if he doesn't do anything and the building continues to look like what it does right now, I'd rather have the, you know, ability to bill that guy right now and let those, you know, keep going or keep collecting if he's not going to do anything with the building. You understand what I'm saying, Steve?
Sure. You know, he's going to feel obligated, of course, to pay it, otherwise he's subject to penalties. So he's going to want to pay that each month.
But can we waive it, I don't know if this is what you're asking, for a time? And then maybe as he's trying to get going, but if things start happening, he really starts working, or then maybe we could start billing? Like, is, would it have to be for a year? It could be just for a period of time that we could waive it?
Or we could even reimburse him maybe at the end of the year for moving forward on the project.
Or could we agree to like waive the outstanding bills? And then like waive it for six months and revisit this in the spring? Because, I mean, the, the fact of the matter is, it's going to sit with no water over the winter. So can we just revisit this in the spring and kind of see where things are at and where he's at in his development plan?
Yeah, and if something changes where he connects, obviously, then we kick in the fees immediately.
Right. So let's just, do we have consensus to waive the past fees?
The past, yeah.
And I threw out six months just to get us through the winter. Does anyone have better ideas?
Sounds fine.
Okay, so can we just put it on an agenda six months from now?
Six months from today, basically? So that'll be March, end of March?
Sure.
Do they need to take a motion on any of that?
Yeah, I mean, if, if it is, if it, this is going to be the official action of the council, then yeah, you probably need to make a motion for it to date and then...
Because you're talking about waiving of fees, you know, you want to get them off the record, and that would take some action by the council.
But the looking forward component of this, like readdressing this after six months, that probably doesn't need to be part of the, the motion, that can be more consensus. So, motion, if that's how you want to move forward, would be regarding fees to date, and then looking forward would be a little more...
Well, I would make a motion to waive the outstanding utility bills.
So we have a motion by...
Second.
Groco, seconded by Eker. Any further discussion about waiving the past fees? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we need to even address it, or can we? I'm sorry. So, Mark, do we need a second motion to address?
No, I, I don't think you need a second motion to address the fees looking forward.
Okay.
So it sounds like what we want to approach this is, you know, at three to six months, whatever it is, to readdress this for the, the new fees that are going to begin to accrue.
Okay.
And assess at that point if a similar motion is appropriate.
Okay.
So would it be the direction, and I'd just simply bring this back in six months?
Yeah.
And you guys reevaluate it at that time?
And in March, early April, let's put it back on the agenda and see where we're at.
Okay.
And see where he's at with his plans. Is that fair?
And you're going to let him know that, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on that?
That's all I have.
Okay, so next is eleven C, draft ordinance three seventy-eight, amending the city charter.
So our charter commission had its annual meeting last month, and they had one proposed, they have one proposed change to the charter. Actually, this was a, a recommendation coming from Mark. He drafted the ordinance, it's in your packet on page sixty-five. And basically, what we're looking at here is to change, um, the language as far as certifying, um, city fees, penalties, fines, those kind of things. So we're, Mark had drafted, uh, some new language here that he thought, thought was more appropriate for the cover of the things that we do. Um, and so, Mark, if you want to add anything to that?
Sure. I mean, th- this is mostly designed to, to, I guess, cast a little wider net in terms of what types of fees can be assessed against, um, property taxes. And so, um, you know, this basically expands the, the legal authority that the city has to assess outstanding fees for any legally, or legally levied fine or cost or expense that the city could, um, assess. So, uh, before, it was kind of constrained to certain things, so this is pretty much any charge can be assessed against the property taxes. And, um, it's come to our attention that this is necessary, if this is how we want to ensure that, you know, our sort of last line of, uh, of payment, um, for all of our costs, so... I would also say that, so if we're setting a, a public hearing for the next meeting, um, and, uh, you know, once we get around to voting on the ordinance, we need everybody on the council to vote. It has to be unanimous, and everybody has to be here. So, um, in terms of scheduling votes on this, um, we kind of need to make sure that everybody can be there.
In order to advertise the meeting, we would have to, the soonest we could hold it would be Nor, November fifth, that meeting. I don't know what Scott's schedule is.
Yeah, I, on your weekly email, can you just ask or text?
Yeah, I could find out, but I guess for right now, as far as everybody knows...
I know I won't be here November fifth.
You won't be here?
I'm in Texas.
Okay. Maybe we can look at the second meeting in November then?
Why you screw it up, Tony?
It'd be the nineteenth? November nineteenth?
Plan to be here?
Yeah. My schedule's not out that far.
Yeah. I have nothing planned this winter, fall.
I should be wrong.
Yeah, so check with Scott and if...
Okay. If we could just do the motion?
Tony, Tony is primising.
Chief Police Conference.
Okay.
Moving to our December meeting?
Right now, that would be December third.
You good, December third? Are you sure?
That's potentially our last meeting of the year.
You have no choice.
Okay, let's shoot for December third then. So tonight, you just need a motion to schedule the hearing for seven PM on December third, twenty twenty-five, for the purpose of considering adoption of ordinance number three seventy-eight. So anyone who want to make that motion?
So move...
There's a motion from Rose, seconded by Eker. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else? Any closing comments by councilor staff?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Eker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Who wants that one?
I'll take it.
Okay, seconded by Rose. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.